Oh, that box says six, this one says five, so I guess we can start. So we're gonna call the meeting to order at, according to my watch, six o'clock. Okay. Alyssa.
Present.
James.
Present.
Lee.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
And Carla. Let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting is a meeting of the board in, of the board in public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Notice of the public meeting was given as required by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight four, one through four, by being posted at the Community First Bank, Rochelle Public Library, Rochelle Post Office, Rochelle District Office, Rochelle School Website, and with W D U X and W S B T and W S A W. Consider approval of agenda additions and revisions. Do I have a, a motion to approve the agenda? Or are there any additions or revisions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, James will make a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Leroy will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hey, motion was carried. Public forum. Public forum is forum. Provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues, including on the school board agenda. The board president will establish general operating rules once the number of people wishing to speak is identified at the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name, address, and share with the board what topic you wish to be speaking on. We ask that you please refrain from identifying specific persons in your comments. Okay, we have one person today. Um, Jeremy Miller. So, give me ten minutes.
I don't need that much.
Okay.
Just have two questions. Or concerns. Jeremy Miller, nine five zero five, West Maple Road. Uh, one concern is the roofing bids. I get it, you's bed under seal, seal, uh. Full session? That's fine. Uh, we heard you picked a contractor, fine. What is that costing us taxpayers? What options did you go with? People are wondering that. I'd like to, what were the comparisons? Is it, are you doing it all? Would it be cheaper to, is it cheaper to do it all at once? Is it? Are you doing it in sections? I guess we'd like to know. What were, what were the differences in bids also? Just be nice to know price differences. For comparisons. And my second question is. With the football meeting coming up this weekend. Why are we hearing it from parents? Not from the athletic director of school? Or you, Mr. Kizer? It just seems like it started out the wrong way. Our kids last year petitioned for different other coaches, and nobody got, they didn't get listened to. So why are we having that meeting now, I guess, too? Just my two questions.
When is that meeting, Jeremy?
The twenty-seventh, I believe.
This Wednesday.
You didn't say at six, right?
Yeah.
This Wednesday, so twenty, it's at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-seven. At six. Auditorium.
Me, it should've been coming from you or the athletic director or the coach himself, not from different.
I'll speak to that during my district administrative report.
Yep. Just my two concerns.
All right, well, thank you for bringing those concerns to us, and hopefully you'll get some of that answered today, Jeremy.
I hope so.
All right. Okay. District Administrative Report.
Very first topic, fo- football listening session that's coming up this Wednesday. Um, uh, similar to last year when, um, during the football season, my first year here, so this would've been not last season, two seasons ago, the twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, school year. I wanna say we were two-thirds of the way through the season, and that's when the W I A announced their proposed realignment for the conferences, and upon finding out that we would be then grouped with Edgar and Abbotsford and, um, Auburndale, and Pachelli's still in there, I think Iola's still in there.
Marathon City.
Um, I don't think they're in a, they're in a, well, the, the three big ones, maybe assumptions in there?
Assumptions.
Um, but for me, it was, oh my gosh, it's Edgar, who's traditionally a powerhouse, Abbotsford, who's a, a, a much larger high school, um, and Auburndale, who's got really a, a pretty good tradition as well, and all three of those were, uh, state qualifiers during that season, or playoff qualifiers. I started to ask some questions about, hey, when I, when I look around at, at some of the plaques out here, I see, oh, Tri County and Wild Rose and some of those schools. So I had had a conversation with Steve Schuffs and had reached out to the Booster Club to see if that would be the appropriate forum to ask the question about, do we fit where we fit with this new conference realignment? Should we be looking at going to an eight-man football? Does that make more sense? Um, just trying to understand what was going on or what the feelings were. Well, within a week, I had students in the hallway coming up to me saying, Mr. Kizer, if we go to eight-man, that's not real football. I'm transferring schools, that's ridiculous, how dare you even suggest that? Okay, point taken, right? I, I won't ask a question. Booster Club came back and said, we really don't wanna be affiliated with that conversation because we don't wanna perceive, we don't wanna perceive that Booster Club is either in favor or against moving to an eight-man. Um, and so we kinda dropped the issue because it was, the feedback that I was received was overwhelmingly, stop messing around with our football program. Um, fast forward a year, and there was a parent request to come in and, and talk with myself and Steve, so there was actually two parents that attended. And they posed some of the questions that I was considering the year before, to say competitiveness, uh, like schools, school in-conference travel. Now, as we've learned a little bit with eight-man football, and when one of the things that will present is that when you're, you're, uh, looking for non-conference games, sometimes you're traveling quite a distance, because it's not like every, every school has an eight-man conference. And so, um, what, what was requested was to have a meeting, just to have a listening session, because the parents' perspective that came to speak with us, um, after we had kinda run through what had transpired the year before, they, they thought that the community sediment, the community beliefs might've changed a little bit, that maybe it wasn't so slanted to say, don't even mess with eleven-man, that there would be some, some support for an eight-man football. I'm not saying that we should or should not, um, but I think it's worth the conversation, so, um, we said, yep, we'd agree to a meeting. So we, we were able to schedule that date, I published that date, and to the question, uh, the parents said, we will make sure people are there. Well, I wasn't going to put it out a month and a half ahead of time, so what we did is we waited until two weeks before the meeting date to say, here's the meeting date. We sent a letter to all middle school and high school parents and students to say, if you're interested in football, please consider attending this meeting. And that's what we're going forward with. So Steve and I and, uh, Michael Donald, the, the, uh, head football coach this time, are going to present some information about pros and cons that were not only, uh, generated last year, but also during that parent meeting. Talk about some of the W I A constraints, because I think there's misconception that we can just switch and, hey, tomorrow we could be playing eight-man, and, and we're not. This, this, uh, this current season, or I should say, this upcoming season for the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're already locked into eleven-man. We're into that. So every, um, every even year is when we can make an appeal to W I A for the following season. So this is twenty-twenty-four. We can apply by October first for the following season to make a move. So, part of that, part of that conversation and part of that, uh, listening session is to present some information and is to listen to see what the community beliefs are, or what their, uh, concerns are with, uh, with, with the football program moving forward. Eventually, if there is a high degree of support for eight-man football, and if athletic director, parents, student athletes, coaches, believe that's the right way to go, eventually that decision will come to the board. So, simply holding a listening session to try to understand more about what the views are that are out in the community. So that'll be held this Wednesday at six P M. in the auditorium. Um, if board members are interested in attending, I'd just ask that you let me know, because if there is a quorum that would be there, I wanna make sure that we post that appropriately, saying no business will be taken, but that there'll be board members in attendance, so if you are attending or are thinking about attending, just let me know. I'd rather post than not only have two people show up than not post and have a walking quorum. So.
So am I understanding that we put out, the district put out a notification, but other people put out information prior to it?
That's my understanding, that there, there was conversations and Facebook posts that went out ahead of time.
What about Gridiron Facebook group? It was put on the Gridiron Facebook group.
Oh, okay.
And I, I will say that I did have a conversation with, uh, the Booster Club President, because evidently there was a youth meeting, and some comments were made about this meeting, and so I had a phone call about twenty minutes after the fact, and so I contacted, uh, the school or, uh, Booster Club President just to say, hey, this is the information I, I received just now, and he was like, well, that, that's, that's, good news travels fast, because that meeting ended like, like eighteen minutes ago, and you already have words. I, I'm just trying to understand, because, um, it was presented to me that there was advocacy for eight-man, that it was a done deal, that it was going to happen, and, and that's, that's a school board decision, that's not a, a youth league, that's not a Booster Club, that's not a, a, a coach, that's, that's a school board decision to make that, that move to an eight-man. So I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that that's not what was stated, because that would be a process through the, the Board of Education, so. Any questions on that? Again, if you're thinking about attending, please let me know, and.
I'm gonna try being there.
What's that?
I'll try being there.
Okay.
I will too.
Okay, then, Tricia reminded me, let's just post it to make sure, and then if something happens where people can't make it, but at least that way we have it covered. Um, second on my list is the Ray, uh, Ray Nelson update. Uh, we did review, or we did receive a, a short note back. The family was very thankful of our support of the transportation to, uh, his final resting location, so, um, I would just wanna thank you on behalf of the family and for the board supporting that. Uh, if you remember, we approved the school bus taking, um, his remains to, uh, King for final placement, so that was, um, received very well. Uh, third on my list, Rochelle Special Education, we have the official notice, um, that we meet the I D E A standards, and so a couple of years ago when I got here, there was some question marks there that we, we weren't meeting those standards, and so, uh, where you put your, your time and your energy and your effort is where you see improvement and change, and, and that is a good thing. We thought that this year might be kind of up in the air, because we had, uh, at the high school level, we had a couple of non-completers, because even though they went into another program post-high school that allows them to segue into the world of work, it's viewed as, as being a non-completor, and so we thought that that would affect our graduation rate, put us into the does-not-meet-standards category, but, um, we did, uh, meet that through D P I, which is good. Um, fourth on my list, McKinstry study. So I kinda chuckle, because, um, if, if you remember from last meeting or two meetings ago, there, that we were talking, and, and this is actually for the last several, uh, months, we've been talking about facility improvements, like how do we go ahead and, and move boilers forward and air handlers and some of those mechanical pieces that have been, you know, we've got the Band-Aid approach going on quite a bit. Uh, we did hear from one company that came together with a, um, a plan, but it wasn't necessarily what we consider to be a comprehensive plan. Uh, since then, we've engaged in conversation with some other, uh, other entities. Um, there was a comment asked about the McKinstry study that was done, because evidently McKinstry is a company that's in that arena. They came in here in twenty-twenty-one and, um, presented to the board about some of the, uh, the needs that were necessary. What I was able to find out is that the two people that were here for McKinstry are no longer employed, employed by McKinstry, but they were able to find the, um, the, the board presentation. Basically, they have one, they have multiple fees, and, and if there, if a district's looking for them to come in and say, hey, here's our needs, give us some, you know, with your network of, of contractors, go to bid for us and then bring those prices back, and then let's get that project done. They can also do a full-blown, uh, facilities analysis, which includes carpet and seating and square footage and ceiling tile and lighting and all that stuff, which is not what they did for, for Rochelle. So it was not a comprehensive facility study. What they did is they came in, listened to concerns, and those concerns were raised by multiple people, and there was four main areas. The fire system, um, the roofing, um, mechanicals, and there was a fourth one, I don't remember what it was. Uh, we've addressed two of the four, so the roofing is being addressed as, um, as was the fire systems, and that's, that is at the point where we can say that it's complete now, uh, which is good. So they were able to come in, provide quotes for those four things, um, use their, their bidding process, and basically, um, we hired them to go to bid for us, knowing what specs were and, and all that good stuff. Um, so it wasn't a full-blown facilities analysis, I don't know as we move forward, if that's going to be something that we're interested in as a board, um, and to be determined at a later time, because as I said, we're working with, uh, we, we've been talking with multiple companies as to who can provide the best solution for us, because it's not something that we have the, uh, funds available to just to say, oh, we're gonna replace all of our boilers and all of our air handlers and all of our, um, units in the classrooms, those, uh, um, HVAC systems, so it's not something that we could do that. Um, but I also wanna report that McKinstry wasn't necessarily a full-blown facility study, it was just kind of, I mean, what do you think you need? Here's some quotes for that, let's work off of that to get some of those, those projects done, which, like I said, two of the four were done. Any questions about McKinstry? Okay. Um, lastly, I just wanted to talk about, uh, school perception, so we have received, um, the initial reports. I don't have the, uh, full report for the board yet, because they do take our perception data, again, we, we asked our staff to take the survey, and we, um, had a seventy-nine percent response rate, which is really, really quite good. I think, if I remember correctly, the previous response rate was like sixty-five or sixty-two percent. So we had more people respond, which is good. Um, out of that, that does break it down by, um, elementary and secondary, secondary being six, I'm sorry, seven through twelve, um, and elementary being K-six. And it does break it down by department, so it does break it down if you're in food service or bus driver or custodial or whatever. The caveat is that if there's fewer than five people, it won't give you any data. So, like administration, there's three of us, it doesn't give us any data, because then you could probably fine-tune and, and understand who said what, and so it's, it's trying not to do that. But we're gonna share the initial results, uh, with the staff during our staff meeting, coming up this Wednesday at the district staff meeting. And then my hope is that, uh, by April's meeting, I'll have the board high-level view about what the data says, and, um, they break it down based on item analysis for each question. They also break it down to say, um, if your district is reporting, and, and this is where I think the comparison's a little bit off-center, um, they try to compare it with other schools and similar size and what they report. Well, it's a perception survey, so it's not saying that your handbook is the best out there, it's saying that your people believe your handbook is the best out there, and then you are in the top twenty-fifth percentile. If you, if your people don't believe you have the best handbook that's out there, you would be in the, the lower, lowest twenty-five, twenty-fifth percentile. But the goofy thing is that we're not comparing each other's handbook. We're saying that it's what people believe about the handbook, so to compare it with other schools is, I, I guess it's worth something, but it's not worth as much as really finding out, like, what I'd like to see, and, and they change surveys, but we have some questions that have longitudinal data, so when we took the, the, the survey back in twenty-sixteen and then twenty-eighteen, and then twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, and now twenty-twenty-four, what do those questions look like? Are we going up, are we going down? That's probably a little bit more important, um, than comparison to what other people feel about their school, which has no direct connection to ours. But, uh, like I said, we'll present the initial findings to our staff on Wednesday, and then by April's meeting, we'll have our initial report from the board. So, other than that, I, that's all I have for the District Administrative Report.
Do you, um, you have on the agenda the UW S P job fair Thursday afternoon?
Oh, I do have that.
Yes, you do.
I didn't put that on there.
I don't see that, man.
It's mine.
Yeah, because you and I are going to the UW S P job fair on Thursday afternoon.
Oh, you don't have it in you?
No.
Oh, well, okay, never mind.
Um, correct, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, so UW S P, uh, along with UW Oshkosh and some of these schools are starting to hold job fairs. Um, we did not attend last year, I don't know if we've attended in, in previous years. Uh, we are attending this year to see, um, if there's talent out there, because we do have a, a, a couple of openings within the school. We have had a, a high school special ed teacher that has not been able to be filled. Um, so we're still running with one teacher there, we'd like to have two. And if we can find somebody that's interested, we would steer them towards Marathon County and see if we couldn't get them on board. Um, we also have a bilingual assistant position that's open, and even though we're going there as a, um, teacher recruitment tool, uh, maybe there's leads to other people that might fill that, those other roles. We never know what the summer brings, because every summer there seems to be a little bit of turnover in, in school districts, um, and that's usually the, the, the time that that happens. Um, so we shall see, but, uh, we're gonna go there and see if we can't meet some, some young people, and, um, you know, maybe there's other positions that will come available, and, uh, depending on our approval, we may have a long, our full-time sub position open in twenty minutes or so, when that comes up on the agenda. Um, and we'll see if we can't fill that as well. Thank you, Carla, for that reminder.
Okay, um, elementary school principal required.
Well, I thought her day, I have nothing to say unless you have a question.
You have nothing to say. Write that down on your calendar.
You have nothing to say.
Okay. Is Shane ready?
He, he's on vacation.
Okay.
But I have his report, if you'd like to see it.
Sure. That would be great.
Um, he's got a couple of field trips here, the F C C L H field trip is, where are they going? It's a leadership conference at Kalahari, um, coming up on April eighth, so we wanna make sure that we have this approved. It is from the eighth through the tenth. And making sure that we have the board approved approval for that. We have a host of field trip, this one is coming up on April fourteenth, and again, that is also at the Dells. Um, this one, through Vista, um, again, multiple days, so we're seeking approval for that on the consent agenda. We have a middle school field trip request from the Student Council. Um, so this comes in, this is, um, they have an annual weather slash student day. They also have, um, another student day that's like incorporated with Math Day, and that one didn't work out in the schedule, but this, they're looking at, uh, or asking to take the, um, the students to the Brewer game. Um, there is educational value in it, because they do have these special days specifically for, um, students. Now, I'd be remiss if I said, oh, it's just like being in the classroom, it's not, it's, it's more fun than, than anything else, but, um. So that is a request, uh, from the Middle School, High School Student Council. And last but not least, we have the Middle School end-of-year field trip request, uh, starting to plan for the end of year. It seems like that's crazy, but after this week, uh, you know, Good Friday is on Friday, and then that's the end of our quarter, so then we come back, we have nine weeks left of school, which is pretty alarming, because it seems like it, it shouldn't be going that fast, but again, this is to the Wisconsin Dells, they're not sure yet, Montelepius or Kalahari, it depends, um, which one has availability, because sometimes they fill up for these end-of-year, end-of-season trips. So, uh, again, that is Mr. Krieger asking for permission to take those students on the field trips. Um, Shane also wanted just to recognize our winner, winner conference awards in wrestling. Uh, Magnus Hilgers placed second, uh, team all-conference, and Keegan was honorable mention. The team finished sixth, uh, which is improvement from ninth and tenth in the past two years, respectively, so again, the more students we have, the more participation, the better the caliber, so, um, hopefully we're getting there when it comes to our wrestling team. Um, looking forward to next season, we'll see if we can continue to improve in that. In girls' basketball, Sarah Trzysinski was a first-team all-conference selection, and Elizabeth Trzysinski was honorable mention. In the boys' basketball, Ethan Stoudt and Marcus Cole were both honorable mention for the season, so, um, just recognizing those students uh, and their accomplishments. And I think that is all that Shane had on his report.
Okay.
I have a question, when she goes overnight, are those all just girls with her? Because I used to take kids, and I always had to have, uh, a female chaperone with me, and she, she has boys in those.
The majority, I, I don't know specifically, the majority would, are girls, but there may be boys as well, because it's not specific to one, I don't know, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a roster as far as who's going, and I don't know that that's been determined yet.
It just popped in my head, because I have.
I would think that if she's bringing both, that she should have a male chaperone. That's my opinion, but everybody else can do it, you know?
I agree.
I mean, they're teenagers.
So then do those kids stay in the room by themselves?
Correct. Well, a lot of times what they do is they'll, they'll, um, team up with other school districts too, so if there's, say we had two male students and the, and the room is, it sleeps four, then they'll team up with two other kids, and they'll, they'll room together.
I used to do that with fashion, the Ambers, we'd go down Ambers had a female teacher, so I watched the guys.
Yeah, and when I was, and when I was in Decca, we did the same thing with, uh, believe it or not, Oregon, down by Madison, they were like our sister chapter, and so we'd always fill rooms together and make sure that we had ample chaperones. And I would, I would venture to guess that there's other, even though I would, most people probably think it's more female-dominated in the, in the face area, but there are male-faced teachers, and so those male teachers do double-check and check, and they work together quite well, but I can definitely ask that question.
Oh, are they getting there, you know? Because it doesn't say on their thing whether they're taking a bus or whether they're taking cars or. It's not really complete, I mean, just.
That sheet's not filled out.
I don't think, I don't think.
Request isn't filled out.
Oh. Most of them weren't filled out, there you go.
And so the number of kids.
So we're looking at five students, one adult, so we'd be looking at a van.
Scroll up.
But it doesn't say like the mileage or what it is or anything that they're requesting, so obviously they're not requesting a vehicle from us, right? They're, they're gonna drive their own vehicle?
No, they it, but I don't, I don't think Kalahari is that over fifty miles?
Oh, yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Miss by the Dells. Yeah, it should be. They'd be using a school van.
The, the thing that's missing at the top.
Yeah.
Maybe the dark, that you can't see, is if there's a, one of those should be checked, if they want the large van or the.
Yeah, she doesn't have any of those.
And then there should be an estimated miles one way.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not here.
Yep.
And is it on the other one, or is the other one filled out?
No.
No. Yeah, and Andy, he has a hundred and fifty miles for.
Yeah, Andy, yes, he's.
Milwaukee.
He's probably a little bit more experienced.
To Montelepius or Kalahari.
Yep.
We should take that that shadowing off that section.
It's ninety-three miles to the Dells. Mentioned ninety-three miles to Wisconsin Dells. Yep.
Ninety-six.
So we can, we can work on it with the form, but with the number of students that, it would be, it would, you know, with five, that's, that's gonna be our van or our car. Mini van, whatever it might be.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that.
We can take them out. Take them out.
I, I would not advise that.
She made it to the corner. Okay, and anybody else have any other questions regarding, um, Mr. Larson's? Okay, well, let's move on then, consent agenda. Country, resignation, retirements, and board-approved field trips.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get back to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just trying to get back to PDF agenda here. All right, consent agenda. Um, first area is contracts, I hopefully had a chance to review JV baseball, we do, we had, uh, an individual from the Marshfield area currently attending, um, UW S P Marshfield Campus as, uh, expressing interest. We did have, uh, myself, Mr. Larson, and Mr. Schuffs meet with that individual. Um, we did have that person come and meet with our, uh, baseball coach, head, head baseball coach, and um, try to work out timing and, and responsibilities and that type of thing. Uh, custodial maintenance, we are recommending, um, hiring a replacement for, uh, the position that we just filled and then was vacated again, uh, so we have another recommendation, uh, for that. And then we do have our elementary teacher that we went through, myself, um, Mrs. Klein and Mrs. Krulow, uh, were part of that interview team, and the hiring recommendation form will show, uh, that there was a handful of applicants we interviewed for both, and have our selection based on the criteria that was presented, then, uh, would recommend the hiring as presented. We do have resignations or retirements, uh, we have our evening cleaner, and we have an elementary position, um, in, in the third grade that has a resignation for. In in the third grade that has a resignation for family reasons. And we have the field trips that we just talked about and the regular board meeting minutes from the nineteenth of February. So pending any questions on any of those, if you want me to call things up on the screen, we can take a look, but other than that, we'd be. Looking to approve those positions, field trips and meeting minutes.
I would make that motion. I'll second it.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as written? The eye? Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Approval of bills and financial statements. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Box with the motion.
I have some.
Okay, go ahead.
I even sent them in to Dennis this time.
True, and and I responded this afternoon, did you get that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, you have which ones he sent Dennis?
I do, um. So one of them was, uh, seven, seven, two, two, seven, six.
Under general fund or?
I believe it's in the general. Check summaries.
Check summaries.
And what was the question on that one?
I was just wondering why was there a bill for five thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and thirty three cents? For we cardio repairs, was it something that was preventative or was it something from neglect where? It was used improperly or someone did damage to it where they need to be fixing this or?
Preventative maintenance, so, um. I had Rachel do some checking on on each one of those and actually called up, um, all the the supporting documentation, so. That 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 bill was for preventative maintenance or repairs to weight room equipment, the last time we paid for this regular maintenance is twenty twenty. So it it's gone on for four years, so it was it was time. And that is paid out of the co-curricular student activity and most of that is, uh, funds raised by the weight room key fobs and hornet cards and those types of things. So it's not coming out of our general, general budget, but periodically we do that and it get recertified and all that other good stuff with with the, uh, the equipment. So it hadn't been done for quite some time. So brought them in and had that done, so it's, I would argue it shouldn't be four. Years next to that, like every other year.
What was the four seventy five for then, because that's what says that was preventative maintenance? Yeah, right below. Same check number.
I don't have that one.
Seven, two, two, seven, six, the exact same one. There's one for five thousand, five hundred eighty dollars and thirty three cents, and then there's another one for four hundred and seventy five dollars.
It very well could be the same. Actually, let me do this, let me go to. So this is a breakdown, and and this is what I had sent you with the link to these things. This is the itemized. List of what was what was done, the parts and their labor and that type of stuff. As far as the second. So there was, these were the two checks. I'm assuming that's because we received two invoices, so we cut two different checks for the specific amount on those on those invoices. So that would answer why there was two check numbers, two two separate invoices. Next one I have is seven, two, two, nine, four.
Yeah, my question was, why does that come out of the general fund and not the basketball fund? The girls' basketball fund for the girls' basketball state tickets?
Similar to the seven, two, three, three, five for the the coaching clinic. That's something in our coaches handbook that that they're allowed to do that doesn't come out of fundraising, so. In the coach's handbook, they they can attend one clinic, they can go to the state tournament, they can take people to state tournament, they can do X, Y, Z. According to the coach's handbook, so that's why it comes out of general, because that's in the coach's handbook.
And do we have a signed contract for seven, two, two, three, five? For them to be the coach for this next coming year then?
Seven, two, three, three, five?
Yeah.
We we don't because we have not had the presentation of coaches to the board for approval yet.
You know what I mean, that's my question, like if it's, if they're not an employee, right, that that's not their position yet officially, but we're paying for them to go and do something?
But they're in that position this year.
Correct, but their contract is over. Right, their contract is ended and they're they haven't received a new contract for following year.
Technically, but I would argue that. Traditionally speaking.
I get it.
That would roll over.
I get it. I'm just.
Or any goofiness that.
Those those tickets are just for.
And that that was my next question. It's not supposed to be for like.
It's not for a group of people, it's those tickets that.
For the coach.
For the coach.
It's just supposed to be for the coach, it's not supposed to be for.
And he can go four days, but it's just for one coach.
Yeah.
Cause like when I went with Steve.
You had to pay for.
I paid for my own tickets. I could get them at the same time, but I had to pay for my tickets.
Let me double check on the wording.
Okay, but then, but I mean, it's not for to take.
Others.
Others.
It's just for, it's just for the coach to go.
Yeah.
It's not for, oh, hey, we're gonna take players, if the players want to go, absolutely, they just have to pay for that. That that's just for. The coach.
Let me check on the language and I will. Can I report back? I have seven, two, three, two, seven boiler unit vent repairs over multiple visits, that's what that was for and I, um, it was. I mean, that was the healthy repair bill.
What are we looking at, I mean? Are we gonna start replacing some of these boilers instead of dropping thirty three hundred bucks on the repair?
That's why we had that conflict demand, that's why we're talking with some other places that do that and. And again, I don't see how we can do that unless we have a performance agreement with somebody. And basically, a performance agreement is, we purchase all the things now, we have increased savings over the next ten years that they guarantee that that's how we start to pay those things off. Because. To sit there and and rework all the interior mechanicals of this complex to do that in. In one year is gonna be virtually impossible to do. Do I agree that we should allocate X amount of money every year to, okay, this year we're gonna do some water heaters, the next year we're gonna do boiler? Cause again, even just replacing boilers from right now, we have extremely large, old fashioned round top boilers, which. They don't make those anymore, they haven't made them for decades. And we have basically a two stage boiler, which means it's either off or it's on, so it's either on full blast or it's off. The boilers I replaced in a different school district, uh, they came in, they were seven stage. So they turn on a little bit, when it calls for more, it turns on a little bit more, when it gets to a certain point, it transfers the load over to another boiler, so now two of them are working to produce. What what's needed as far as the, uh, um, the output, so that's much more efficient and much more economical to run. The 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 crux of the matter is when do you do that and which ones do you do first and which ones do you do second? Regardless of where we start, we do have to start. Because to sit there and wait for something to break and then replace it is not necessarily a a good plan at all. And so all all of those things are beyond what is considered useful life at this point. So no matter where we start is going to be fine, we just gotta devise a plan and go. And seven, two, three, three, five was the clinic. Okay, on that one? And then I have seven, two, three, seven, four, which is goofy because there's two entries there. And it came out of two different accounts, so we split one check from.
I know the tickets were free and.
It was a little.
Like, why was there a different amount, right, that was?
Correct, because, um, there was a fourth grade and a third grade and based on their enrollment, then there was a different cost. And it came out of the third grade account and fourth grade accounts.
Different costs for what, the tickets were free?
I think they were five bucks.
Families, because they budgeted for the field trip.
I thought they were free for, really?
Was a six dollar ticket? Six or five?
But that's why there's.
Free to families because they knew that they have enjoyed going up to this theater production. So regardless of what was, you know, was going to be going, they wanted to use that field trip money to do a theater production.
It wasn't free for families, but.
Dang it. Should have been.
It was awesome to go to, but.
And that that was the last check number that I had, I questioned, was there another one? And again, thank you for reaching out with those because I had a lot of more homework than just sitting here going, I'm not sure.
Anybody else? No, okay, then I need a motion to approve bills with financial statements.
I'll make it.
Okay, man, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor of approval of bills with financial statements, say aye. Those opposed, okay, motion is carried. Old business, school vehicle liquidation, Malibu classic.
So, um. We took off the PD for this month because we anticipated that we were gonna have student presentations. And because of the snow day, we called the students, said, don't come because all activities for students are are null and void, so now we just have this one old business item. And. It's interesting because last month we got into a kind of a conversation about what should be done with the vehicle when. In hindsight, the question before the board is, should we liquidate, should we not liquidate? And to me, that's an easy. Determination because it's something that we don't use, it's something we pay insurance on. And it seems like every other trip we take it someplace that there is some maintenance item that's there. To me, it's more of a liability than it is a resource, and so to liquidate that asset, that's what I'm asking the board to do. On a side note, there, I did reach out to, um. Lack of a better term. You know, there's just to scrap it, it's like five hundred bucks that we could get from it. I know there's been a couple of people that since that meeting is have reached out and said, hey, can we come look at it and find whatever? So I don't know to what level there's interest, but again, the 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 question before the board is is whether or not. Whether or not the board would allow administration to liquidate that asset.
And I think I think we talked about it last time, but there was no motion made to carry that through, we talked about liquidating it, but we didn't have a motion on it, so.
Correct.
They couldn't do anything with it until.
So we have more information.
Do you want that a separate motion or you want it all bundled together?
This is.
Really is.
It's just a liquidation of the selling.
Does the board agree that we should liquidate that asset or not?
Yeah, it's old.
Yeah.
I think we get rid of the old. Put it up for bid, I'll second it, right, put it up for bid, highest bid, there you go. It's gotta be over five hundred bucks, otherwise we'll hold it. Okay, fair enough.
Okay, all those in favor of the school.
Are you just gonna do a closed closed bid, open them up on whatever date, here you go.
I I would argue that I think from a district standpoint, that would be the best thing to do, as is, whereas no warranty, no nothing, closed bid. We'll we'll go ahead and and publish that either on, uh, in the Rothwell Record, on our Facebook page, word of mouth, whatever, and say, okay, bids are due by. Friday, April, whatever.
Before the next board meeting and that way we can approve it at the next board meeting, the sale of it.
Yeah.
Are you gonna allow a certain time for people to come look at it then? You know, I'm saying a lot of time, come look at it like an open house.
Yep.
You know?
Open car.
Open car.
Open car, okay, so.
Noon to noon thirty.
We had a motion. We had a motion.
No test drives.
Okay.
Oh, boy.
Daylight warranty.
Are you guys done? We had a motion on the floor to liquidate the twenty, two thousand eight Malibu classic. A motion was made by Leroy, seconded by James, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, okay, motion is carried, you may liquidate it. Okay, new business, consider early childhood credit program requests.
So every year we have the, um, ECCP request, the Early College Credit Program and the, um, SCN, the Start College Now request. One's just university and one is through the tech school, so, uh, Colton came in today and we 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 talked about this and basically. By statute, we provide up to eighteen eighteen credits for students if they want eighteen credits. Last year we had the conversation at that time, the board said, you know, eighteen's enough, if we get people that that get to eighteen and are still going and want more. Maybe as a case by case basis to see what that would be. Uh, all of these students that are that are here, um, tonight to be approved have not reached the eighteen credit mark, so they're still well within the statutory. Guidelines that we have to follow, so it's really kind of a formality, but, um, this is kind of a an explanation of where they want to go. Um, the classes that they're looking at taking, and when I talked with Colton, he said, he's not, e- even though this student one has four classes listed. The reality, he's never had somebody take more than three. And only one person has taken three, most of them take one or two, because then they get into it and they're like, oh. This is not a typical high school class, this is actually college credit, right, so it's a little bit more stringent a- as it should be, so. That would be student one and. Uh, basically, this is our portion of that, we get a small reimbursement for that. This is this also the start credit or the, um, ECCP course. And I wonder if this. Student one, it looks like it's the same one. ECP, University of Wisconsin, Old Clay. Extended campus, extended campus. I'm gonna go down here, there there are two students, I. I'm thinking, I'm gonna go back up here because he had this on the very top. Oh, that's what it was, okay, I'm sorry, so we have ECCP for the summer. ECCP for the fall and Start College Now for the fall. So that's why there's two student ones for the ECCP program. So this, that would, the one up above was the summer, this is the fall taking those classes. And then Start College Now, we have Northeast Wisconsin Technical College. And again, the classes and then again, Northeast with. With these classes. Did not see a student three up there.
Student three is, um. Is this fall two thousand. For Northwest, Northeast Technical? Those are the college ones. Now, third, student three goes to MSTC.
Okay, so let me go back up here. Thirty seven, was that including all of them? Just gotta double check the math here. What if students took three classes? Thirty seven, eleven. Pay the full cost. Okay, so yes, four, roughly five hundred, five hundred, a hundred bucks, five, five. So yes, okay, so if all three students took all the classes, which again, he's never seen, we'd be approving. The thirty seven, eleven, but again, by statute, we have to cover up to eighteen credits. So again, however they take them now with the, as you remember the conversation we had last year, there was a question about whether or not they could take a course that we offer. And at that time, the board did say yes, but only after they've completed it already here. Because then they could also take it for credit in the college, but they have to take it here first and pass it before they'd be able to do that. Most of the time, they take classes that we don't offer. But the reality, if you have a student that's going to take eighteen credits, try to get a jump on on and a head start on college, they're gonna take eighteen credits regardless of what's in. So. Other questions that you might have? I'd make the recommendation to approve this because again, it it's something that allows students to. Get a a jump start to their college career.
I'm a motion. Okay, are we.
Renegro's gather.
Well, yeah, can we?
I'm sorry, we have to have a motion for the ECCP program and then a separate motion for the Start College Now program.
That's what I was wanting, okay, so do you want to make a motion for the early child, the ECCP request? Okay, let's just.
I'll second.
Okay, man, all those in favor say aye. Okay, those opposed? Okay, motion carrying, now we need one for the SCN request. I'll prove it. I mean, I'll motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor of approving, uh, SCN requests, say aye. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, now we'll move on to CISA five contract.
CISA five contract is identical to what we, um, approved last year. Outside of the fact that last year we spent eighteen thousand, five hundred and some odd dollars and this year it's eighteen thousand, nine hundred and some odd dollars. So if we take a look at this, we have, um, we don't use them for a whole lot. We do have school improvement services and this is for things that we've had them come in and do some coaching with teachers, um, do some presentations, do some of our in-service work. do some presentations, do some of our in-service work. We also have our ACP, which is like our current technical education area. They come in, they have quarterly meetings where they come in and, and help plan those, ACP activities. So I would, barring any questions, again, we're just duplicating what we did last year with a small increase in, in, in fees, which is not abnormal. So not, not that we're adding any services, but keeping the same level of support.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Matt, okay, and James will second. So they have a motion for the CISA five contract. It was motion by Matt, seconded by James. All those in favor say aye. Those oppose? Okay, motion carried. Okay, consider four K program, program. It says here, program, program.
Yep. Um, so this is, this is kind of an outburst of multiple conversations. Renee, thank you very much for attending because this impacts Renee's position directly. Right now, our program is set up to run, and if I misspeak, please feel free to jump in and correct me. Right now, our program's set up to have an all-day Monday, Wednesday, and Tuesday, Thursday. Fridays, right now, is planning prep time because Renee gets zero during the actual course of the regular school day. Right now, Renee's contract is not a hundred percent. It's a ninety-five percent contract. And having initial conversations with Mary and then initial conversations with Renee and Mary to understand a little bit more and why this is coming to the board. Really, we took a look at the open enrollment, and in the last three years, we've had an average of seven students open enroll out of our district from four K. One year was, was higher than the others. It was like twelve or thirteen one year, and other years have been four or five. And we started to ask questions about, why is that? And how come? And, and is it, you know, i- if we could even keep half of those kids per year, so if we keep three, four kids, and we would, would be able to keep them in the district for their height, their, their entire educational career, with state aid and, and the, the money that we get per pupil is significant that we're, that we're missing out on when we have twenty, twenty-four kids the course of a couple of years, uh, open and roll up. So we started to have conversations about the program. And that was really the, the, the kickstarter of the conversation. And where we've kind of gotten to at this point is taking a look at our current format, but how could we adjust that to, to hopefully have more continuous education, have more consistent contact to provide parents with an all-day option and try to save some of those kids from opening along out of the district. That's kind of the, the reasoning behind it. So if we take a look at what we kind of just explained, what we have now, um, and what we're proposing is to provide four K services for five days a week, and we have an AM and a PM option. And by that, we mean that there would be a wraparound program, meaning that if a, if a family has the, the availability to drop their student off or pick their student up in, at the midday, fine. Feel free to do that. If grandmas and grandpas are involved, or if there's a, somebody that's not working or has a time off, what I would argue is that we're not gonna take that on a day-to-day. It's either you commit to this or you don't commit to that. We're initially suggesting a, a small fee for that wraparound program. But by moving to a half-day, um, every day, you do have more continuous instruction. There were concerns and there are concerns about parent requests for morning or afternoon. Because which one do you go with? And if all of a sudden we have, let's say we have, you know, forty kids in, in four K, and, and we, we think, oh, okay, let me go, let me go with thirty-five, let me, let me go thirty then, better numbers. And we have fifteen morning, fifteen P in, in the afternoon, and all of a sudden we get twenty-seven requests for the morning. How do we process that? That could be a concern. So we, we don't have a, a great answer for that, other than to say that we're gonna try to balance those sections. And if we have to do a random draw, you do a random draw. I mean, um, that, that could be. We would not be providing district transportation at the midday. So it's either a, a full-day option, or if you can pick up or drop off, that's fine. But we would not be doing transportation during the midday. We would have that wraparound program opposite the four K time, which would be about another three hours in the afternoon or morning. There would be recess, there'd be lunch, and that would be, as we're proposing, we would have, we'd have two assistants in the wraparound and one assistant in the four K room. Right now, we have one teacher, one assistant, so, and we have a little bit more of the contract that would be an increase. And we'd have two other assistants, so we'd have, you know, a little bit more on, on teacher contract. We'd have two assistants. That would be an additional cost. Mary and I ran through some of the initial calculations, and if we anticipate a seventy-five, sixty-six to seventy-five percent involvement rate with the, the wraparound program, that fee will cover a little over one of those assistants. So really what we're talking would be in addition of one assistant to, to the district, as far as a cost perspective. Uh, benefits that we see, having students here all day, every day, we think that parents would really appreciate that option. We think that would also help assimilate some of the behaviors at a younger age and getting them into the routine of school. You have everyday instruction, which continuous learning is, uh, we anticipate that to be a little bit better, even though it's only half a day, it would still be that routine and that continuous learning. From a struggling student standpoint, we'd be able to start those interventions even sooner because we'd see them every day and it wouldn't be, and we wouldn't have the lag time of, of potentially Monday, Wednesday, and then you don't see that person for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Now that kiddo comes back in on Monday, and it, it's a lot of reteaching. At least I'm assuming it's a lot of reteaching.
Well, it's just inconsistent, right? If they're here every day, it can help them a little bit more.
So I, we've had a handful of meetings about it. We do have some concerns, like staff requirements and no guarantee that students are gonna stay in district. Now, if we take a look at the proposed schedule, DPI requires four thirty-seven hours with eighty-seven point five hours of outreach. And so, uh, we're looking at having students attend Monday through Friday for a total of one hundred and seventy-one school days. That's five hundred and thirteen hours. Th- this would be the sessions. We'd take four hour, uh, four Fridays, one per quarter, and have it be a no, a no school day for our four K. And that would be for opportunities for those out, outreach activities. So that way we can, and, and the goofy part about the outreach is that if we, if we engage in outreach activities, there's a higher percentage that's reimbursable by the state. So it's, I think it's fifty percent or sixty-six percent. So if we don't do outreach, we can only claim fifty percent of, of those students. And then it's higher if you do the outreach. So we wanna continue to do the outreach, and that's just good for our community and our parents to have outreach activities. So I guess I. Mary, Renee, anything to add?
We currently have two families that have let me know that they will not be having their child come here because we are not full day. St. Albert's just went to full days for four K for next year. We have some families that have already opened enrolled out that we didn't even know about living in our district until they applied for open enrollment out. I don't know. I called Iola. Iola did it. Uh, they did this two years ago. They said it's been well-received by families. They said their kindergarten teachers are ecstatic at how students, how well-prepared students are coming in for kindergarten and how there's just been that big of a difference for them. But, you know, it is more staff than it is. It is, we have to rearrange things. Um, we have to figure out where we're gonna put that wraparound program. As far as the AM and PM, you know, we can ask if you have a preference in AM and PM, but if you're utilizing the wraparound program, it doesn't quite matter.
No, it doesn't.
Um, it's really the one that matters is the parents who are picking up and not utilizing the wraparound program.
Mary, are the people that have, um, have opened enrollment out, is there a possibility those people would come back if they knew we had a wraparound program?
I have at least one that has said absolutely.
Okay. I mean, I know you can't say anything because it hasn't been.
But that was literally just because that specific parent said to me, the only reason we're going someplace else, my kid will be back for kindergarten. Oh, it was right there. But I haven't said anything to anybody.
Oh, well, I can't, yeah.
Because it's not even a, right length of a pipe dream, so we all consider it.
Renee, what do you think?
Oh, there's just childcare continues to be an issue for parents. So if they can find places where they can help people watch their kids, that's where they're gonna go. And unfortunately, Rochelle doesn't have a lot of childcare options, and we have some that are full, but they're just not enough. So, um, it would be a good addition, um, expansion for the district. I guess staffing, um, hopes you would get qualified staff to help with the construction and provide good regular opportunities.
What kind of qualifications would, would an assistant have to have? Because would you just have to have two, two assistants in there, or would you have to have a, and are those assistants a full-time assistant? They have received full-time benefits?
Yes.
So what is the cost of it, of an average assistant? Overall cost, as in benefits, money, salaries?
I thought we said sixty. With, if they take insurance, it was sixty. But.
So we're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, right?
Yeah. We would be adding.
We'd have to add two, so.
We would be adding two, but then we would be keeping some of the cost because we would charge for the wraparound.
Yeah, and we're thinking.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't, did we, did we settle on twenty dollars a day to utilize the wrapup?
Spencer charges like twenty-three dollars a day, something like that. We had gotten some information from Spencer School District that does this as well.
We're trying to keep it around hundreds.
Do we have like schools around us that are charging?
Iola does not charge. The board decided that this was what was needed for business and didn't have to charge to it.
And what are we gonna do when somebody says, well, I can't, I can't pay that? How are we gonna address that?
In Spencer, they have to prepay for the following week. So they're, they're not necessarily making a commitment for, every single week, but they say, my child is gonna come three days this week. And, and they have to prepay, so they have to put in a, a week's schedule beforehand.
And what if they, what if they say, hey, you know, I don't have someone, I need, I need someone there all five days or all four days? Do you not let them come in those two days because they're not prepaid? Or is there something set up where, you know what I mean? Like say, hey, I need my daughter to go there three days next week. And all of a sudden, and all of a sudden they need to be all five.
I don't know because I didn't ask Spencer. I just read their, um, I read their handbook that they give to parents.
And we do know that we have some concerns with like lunch balances now, right? So we have, um, programs that we've started to try to help out those people that need that, that aren't able to pay. So it's a legitimate concern. I understand that. And I don't have a great answer for that.
You know, you have a tough time finding quality health ready, right? Now we're gonna try adding two more quality helps. You know, I, I'm not saying we will or we won't, but, and then not having that guarantee, right? Because we could say, hey, yeah, we want this program because it could be very helpful to our school system. But all of a sudden, we got five kids to show up to do the wraparound, right? And everyone else wants to go home. So now we're bringing in a hundred dollars, right? Right? We have a hundred dollars coming in, and we have a hundred and twenty thousand going out.
This wasn't brought up to the, the families that just came in for four K because there was just recently that.
We, we have not done a survey or a questionnaire. It's just based on enrollment trends, open enrollment trends. A handful of interpersonal that happened to bring questions to Mary.
The other question is, how did we not know that there was kids in our district that open enroll to other schools?
No, I guess, uh, with four K, we tend to, certain, we do a census in like the summer, end of summer.
Yeah.
There are new builds, there are people that move in. Tricia has done an amazing job at reaching out to people. Um, but every year, it boggles my mind that when we get open enrollment, we get open enrollment requests for, for families we didn't know lived in our district. So I don't, I don't know, I mean, short of driving and knocking on doors. I.
Which is.
Well, it's not that they, we didn't find out they opened enrolled. It's, we didn't know that this family lived.
Existed.
Existed.
Well, if they don't fill out a form, you're not gonna know.
Now, the other thing that we are doing, and Trish has done an amazing job at this, is to reach out to the three counties and get birth announcements. So if the family's living here and has a new, a new, a newborn in the home, we're starting to find out that information. So then we can keep track of them as long as they don't move. It is a bit goofy if there's a home sale and, you know, do we get that information all the time? No. Do we try to find that information? Yes. Sometimes that's not as accurate as we'd like it to be.
But we don't know the parental situation. I know Tricia had me proof a letter that she's sending to some of the businesses in our area that provide housing for students, or sorry, provide housing for their employees to give a letter that maybe they can include in their welcome packet, letting them know to contact us because, you know, we hear that someone's living in this location that's paid for by a, a community business. I've done home visits during the day to certain homes that I've been told somebody's living in with children. Unfortunately, every home visit has yielded absolutely no response at the door, but who's gonna answer the door to the crazy lady that's knocking in the middle of the day? But I leave our stuff, right? I leave a welcome, an enrollment packet.
Like a cat. That's what you need.
I should carry.
Puppy would work.
Is this yours?
I put puppies that likes everything.
And here's one, here's a small, so.
Mine's small, that's not carryable.
Would you answer the door? If they had a puppy, you would, right? You guys are laughing, but it's smart.
So this, so we're getting back to this. This is just a consideration, and we're gonna kind of weigh things out, but it's kind of like, if we don't do something, we're losing enrollment.
Yeah.
By the, by the year.
Over the last three years, yes. I don't know what it was before that. I haven't gone back that far, but over the last three years, we've lost an average of seven kids in four K. And once, and, and, and my concern, um, once they leave, they develop friendships, they don't come back. Because if they're going to, and, and, and some of them might go anyway, because if, if I work at, if I live in the Rochelle School District, and let's say it's in another part, and I drive into Schofield for work, and I drop my kid off at daycare, four K, elementary school, whatever it might be, I might continue to do that because convenience-wise, why wouldn't I? It's on my way to work, and why would I drive ten miles south just to go another thirty-five north when I could just leave my house, go twenty-five north, and I'm there? So I'm not saying it's going to rectify all the open enrollment outs, but if we, if we have a full-day option, full-week option, which we don't now, would there be the likelihood that some of those students come here instead and develop those same relationships with their kids that they see on the, at baseball, the kids that they see at the football game, in the basketball games, and, and track meets and those types of things? And now they, they come here because there's a full-day option to develop those, those relationships? Maybe. I don't, I don't know what to be yes. I don't know what to be no. I do know that it procedibly is, is more continuous instruction, which is usually better. We've heard reports that the next grade level kindergarten likes it better because we do have neighboring schools. That's kind of the example. And it seems like those kids are better prepared for school, um, when it comes to all-day kindergarten. Providing a wraparound service does provide that all-day option, um, for four K families. I can't guarantee that it's going to be more, right? I do know that from a, a childcare perspective, we're in a desert. We don't have a lot of all-day options. And, and I'm not saying that, man, there has been daycare. There has been daycare comments in the past, and I think opening a daycare is, is something that may be in our future. This is an option just for 4K to do a full-day option to see if there's that need, and if we can keep some of those open enrollments out. And even if we don't, the students and the families that we have will be more well-rounded and better adjusted for kindergarten moving in the next year. That's kind of.
Oh, we're seeing Alberts doing a 4K. They're doing a 3K.
They're doing a 3K, two days a week target.
Yeah, but they're. One kid, two kids, there's no kids, okay? So.
Well, I saw their sign on the.
I know, they're trying.
And then they're doing a 4K full day. You know, currently, we have three students in 4K who are applying for open enrollment out next year. We have two more that have told me they are not coming. Um, and we currently have twenty-one families enrolled, or twenty-one students enrolled for 4K next year. So it will be our smallest grade by far.
I would like to know, like, what's, what's the plans if we do it? Like, where are you gonna put it, right? And what's the cost of making that happen? You know, to me, that's, I don't think tonight's a night to vote on it, whether or not they have it. I think tonight's a good night to say, I want more information, that's for sure. You know, to me personally, I would like to hear, you know, what's the cost of, you know, where are we gonna put it in the school, right? I mean, is it gonna be close to, is it gonna be close to, you know, by you, you know, and, or is it gonna be where Boys and Girls Club is or something? Like, we need, we can't just say, hey, yeah, we're gonna do it, and then.
Then try and figure it out.
And then figure it out from there, right? I think we need some more info. I would like to have you reach out to those stu, that, those families, right? I would, I would gladly give that permission, um, up to the board and say, hey, reach out to the fam and say, hey, if we're able to do this, would you be interested in coming here then instead? And not have, you know, and that way we can, so we can start getting those numbers.
Would you like me to ask, reach out to the twenty-one to say, if we do this, would you be willing to utilize our program? And if so, would you, would, you know, and it has a cost?
I, I don't think it's a bad thing.
I think it's a great idea, because then we know.
Then, then we have a good idea, like, we're, we're, here's, here's what we're looking at so far, you know, I mean, to get that.
And I will tell you, Matt, that we have had conversations about where to, where to put it. Now, without causing massive amounts of consternation with our staff, um.
Staff doesn't like to be moved.
Um, there's a different alternative that I, I think is a leading alternative, but it does involve moving teachers. And anytime you talk about moving classrooms.
It's gonna hit the fan.
People get a little bit wigged out about that because I've spent my whole career in this room, and now you're telling me I have to move, and I have to take, that, that's a major deal, that's a major concern. So without trying to cause that, that chaos, um, if it's not going to be something that's approved, I don't really wanna go down that road. I mean, I can definitely address kind of, and, and put together a plan of what we initially had thought.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, I would like to, I'd like to hear options, you know what I mean, like that, just to see, or what's going on, or how, that's my.
It's my fault, the fact that this room would need furniture and toys.
That's, I mean, like, the overall cost, like, it's not just, hey, putting two assistants in this room, and here you go, right? It's, yeah, it's redoing a whole bunch of stuff that.
Don't you just.
But I'm actually kind of hopeful that we can, you know, some of the stuff that you have that's taking up your space and then swap it out.
I swapped out, oh, I have clean.
You have, you, you definitely have.
Here we go. It started.
The thing you don't go to my basement every day.
What I've been saying, that we all would consider this, I mean, we.
Yeah.
So I hear, um, reach out to next year's 4Kers to see if they'd be interested in the wraparound program if we made the change at a cost, and how many would be willing to do that. Reach out to our current open enrollment outs to say, would this change your opinion about open enrollment? Um, we want to hear uh, physical space ideas, right?
Right, but I think though as administration, you guys are gonna know where, all right, Aaron's gonna know better where the other class needs to be, not, I mean, I don't. I think as, they're gonna be working on another, we like, it's gonna be here and there. If it works for them, you know, I think as a board, we have to decide, do we wanna do this, do we wanna give approval? But some of the little details, I don't think.
I think the cost of it, you know, the cost of it is.
Yeah, the cost.
If we're gonna have it over here, you know, if we have two or three options, say, okay, the cost of it putting here, we're gonna have to move a wall, or we're gonna have to add bathrooms.
I don't think we'll, I don't think we'll have to remodel it at all. It's really gonna be people and.
So one of the benefits of a wraparound program versus a daycare is we don't have to do things like have dedicated water sources and have bathrooms. We don't have to have access to an enclosed playground. We don't have to have a secure entrance for parents to pick up because it's part of the school. Um, that's what Spencer and Iowa have shared that, yeah. It's, at this point, a classroom with the stuff and the people. So that's the benefit of not going daycare route.
Can you ask the parents, the ones that are interested, I just wanna know what they think about the cost?
Would you like me to?
I feel like that's Spencer cost.
Yeah, what, what is though, like, if they were gonna do daycare?
Twenty to twenty-five dollars.
I mean, daycare should have been more than that.
But you have to also think, like, I think about, like, so many of these kids that are out there that are, they're low income, they get daycare assistance. Well, that's not gonna happen if they're coming here, so this is gonna be adding cost to them, and that's one of my concerns was, what if people can't pay, what are we gonna do?
If we went the daycare route, we could then accept the assistance, but then we have to have dedicated bathrooms, dedicated water sources, and we're talking major remodeling, and I don't think anybody wants to go down that road right now. Um, like I said, does, something in the future, maybe? Um, Spencer is the, in our special consortium, they have now, they're nearing completion. I wanna say they're opening either April or May with their birth-to-three center. And, and again, when they think of a school district, we are becoming birth-to-twenty-one centers. Because birth-to-three, early childhood, 4K, 5K, traditional school, and then certain students that are special needs can stay till twenty-one. So it's really kind of that whole gamut. And from a Spencer standpoint, I don't think that we're completely different than them. They don't have daycare facilities, so they said, our community needs daycare in order to have people and families and staff members. So we need, we need to step up and do that, because that's not only a recruitment tool, but a retention tool that they're using for their staff, for their community. Um, because there's nothing else that's, that's available there. People just aren't doing that anymore. Now, if you have listened to legislators talk, they talk about how, um, if you have licensed daycares, the 4Ks have to go through and, and work through those, those daycares because they're hearing that, um, schools are now doing daycare programs, so it's causing the daycare market to dry up. I would argue that that's the opposite way around. There's no daycares out there, so schools are now stepping up to say, we have to provide this as a service for our communities.
So yeah, that legislation just passed. We don't have any daycare centers that we would do, but if we did 4K in the building as we know it, would have to relocate to the daycare center. There would be no 4K in the building for any of this legislation. It would be at the daycare center, and then if there are any families who don't wanna utilize the daycare, they actually would bring their kid or get their child bused to the daycare center.
So in the community, so like Point is not gonna be able to do it at the schools anymore?
Right. Wow. Well, they will have to do daycare centers. I, I think, I haven't read, because for us, it was. But as I was reading it, I was like, oh, wow, so.
It's caused some districts to.
Be in the school districts anymore? Um, do you want me to read and get more information on that?
No.
I can look it up too. It was a, it was a piece of legislation for larger communities, this could be a, a lot.
Well, yeah, because there's not a lot of daycares open in Point, you know, which waiting.
Right, so we'll find out more information, and we'll, uh, come back to this in April.
Okay.
And I just wanna say, I understand that there's like a time crunch on this, especially the wanting to do it next, next year and hire people and, and all of that, like, we understand all of that.
Well, the good news is April's meeting is the fifteenth on tax day, so it's coming up real quick. Because this one's a little bit later because of spring break, so it's.
Barry, can you check with the Spencer people too, if they have people that can't pay, what do they do?
So I'm looking at their thing, it says, if you fail to pay your invoice on time, your childcare services may be terminated. Payments not received by the due date are charged five dollars each day for, each day if late. They don't accept cash, it's only check or money order. There's a thirty-dollar, um, charge for non-sufficient funds. And then theirs is a, theirs runs until six PM, so they have two different charges. They have a charge of, if you're attending more than twenty-four hours a week, it's three seventy-five for a child. If you're attending less than twenty-four hours a week, it's four twenty-five for. So the average is four dollars, basically four dollars on one. Um, and if you are late, now that, again, wouldn't matter to us because our children would be getting on the bus and going wherever they go. Um, but they charge a minute, a dollar per minute late, and then they need a two-week written warrant, a written notice with the child no longer.
Oh, that's like regular, those are bacon, that's what they do.
That's originally, yeah, that's a long shot.
So they do casual drop-ins.
And frankly, the management of that system almost takes a full-time person to manage that.
So like, Matt, your question on if you pay for three and then you use all five, theirs does say you can do that, but it costs you an extra five dollars per day that you do that.
And then, you know, on, you look at it.
Just do at pickup.
You know, and if you do that, you know, on the other hand, you know, if you prepay, what if my, you know, what if I say I'm gonna go there for four days and all of a sudden Grandma wants my kid for one day? You know what I mean, you pay for it.
You just pay for that day.
I know, but you know what I mean, like, you're gonna hear the backlash.
But if they were in a regular daycare, that's exactly what happens, you pay.
I know.
Even in the summer, when you have some daycare. Okay, well, we'll move on. It'll be interesting to hear about that in April. Okay, um, dental insurance renewal.
Received our renewal from Delta Dental, this is a zero percent increase over, um, last year. And so, uh, from, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the, like, second or third year in a row that we've had, third year in a row that we've had zero percent increase, um, from Delta, so that's, I, I say, let's take it, I would recommend renewing.
Okay, I'll make motion. Okay, I'll second it. All those in favor of, wait, let's see, dental insurance request. All those in favor say aye? Those oppose, okay, motion is carried. Skyward updates. Oh, damn.
So this comes to us, and, um, again, this is another conversation area, because as we continue to look at how we can improve things and, and find efficiencies, um, from a systems standpoint, one of the questions, um, that Rachel and I have talked about is moving our current paper time cards and paper time off for support staff to a digital function. Because, um, right now, whether it be right, wrong, or indifferent, Rachel sends out a message to say, hey, oh, by the way, time cards are due by whatever time on Thursday for next Wednesday's payroll. Okay, so what happens is people will go back, and it's really not, not their fault, but they'll go back and they write in eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, eight hours, because they're not filling those things out on an everyday basis. It's not like the old-fashioned, I punch in and punch out. And so they go back, fill this out, and then we go through and like, wait a second, this was a snow day, you didn't come to work, so we cross that one out, recalculate the hours, but it's all done on paper. The person fills it out, they send it to their supervisor, they are double-checking the hour sign-off that, yep, that's when they worked. Then it comes to Rachel, Rachel recalculates the hours, makes sure it, it's there, she signs off on it, comes to me for final approval, and then it goes into the payroll system. And every time that you have a human touch, there's a chance for error, there's a chance for lost paperwork, there's a chance for spilled coffee, and it ruins the ink. Um, there's, things happen, humans happen. Um, so we've had the conversation of keeping our current SMS two-point-oh system in Skyward and adding something called True Time. True Time would be that that punch-in system, it's, it's, they'd have to log in, um, that you can do it from a phone and have an app that, that would have to be connected to the school's Wi-Fi, because it's not something where you can say, I'm leaving home, punching in, and I'm driving for fifteen minutes, it would have to be done here. We would also have Chromebook Station setup where people would, would sign in, or if they're working, you know, in an office environment, then they could sign onto their computer and technically quote-unquote punch in. What happens with that is that it goes to their supervisor, supervisor verifies the time that they've worked, they're doing it on an everyday basis, they click on submit, electronically goes to Rachel, she clicks submit, comes to me, click and submit, and it is automatically pre-populated into the payroll software. So it's much more efficient. It's time-saving, um, it would be a little bit of training, and there's a cost to that. The goofy part for us is that, um, right now, we're on an old system of Skyward. And so Skyward is starting to force states to move to their new system. Right now, we use SMS two-point-oh, they have this new system that's cumulative, it's been out for several years. Um, but they are starting to, to push states to go there. Illinois is currently on a four-year window to move all of their districts to cumulative. Idaho, because there's not a ton of, uh, districts out there, they're on a two-year window, so in two years, all thirty-eight school districts that are using Skyward will have to be on cumulative. So as we started talking in, in our office, we're like, do we want to institute True Time as a new module? Or do we wanna just move to cumulative? Because, um, cumulative also provides all the things in yellow that would be, that, that comes along with the, the core business suite, which doesn't come along right now with the SMS. Um, as part of that, we would, we could use time tracker, which is the cumulative version of True Time, and there's a cost for that. Um, but that's eventually where we wanna go, so the question is, do we, do we take a look at updating now to True Time using our current system and force a minor change? But then when Skyward comes along and says, hey, you gotta switch, now they force another change. Or do we move just the finance, not our student, not our parent portal, just the finance side to cumulative? Now, we increase our functionality, we also include the time tracker, so we have that change right there, and we changed that one time instead of multiple times. Eventually, Skyward will force us to go finance, cumulative, and eventually student management, cumulative. Nothing upset me greater than when, um, the people, I, I was, I was an associate principal, and my IT director, Dan, I love IT directors, but my IT director at that time said that Skyward is no longer supporting the PAC version, and so we're gonna have to go to the web version, which is the SMS two-point-oh, so this is two thousand and ten-ish. So we went to that, and what I used to be able to do with the old, like, DOS prompt system, I, I had the keystrokes. I could put in, let's say there's twenty discipline records in about forty minutes, thirty minutes. When I went to the web version, it took me an hour and a half to do those same twenty records, because you, you click on something, you wait for the internet to catch up. You click on something, you wait for the internet to catch up. Eventually, we got T-one lines, we had better internet service, and it sped up a little bit, but I was very dissatisfied with the progress. At that time, my IT director said, Skyward is forcing this change, only to find out that I moved to a different district, and they still had the old version. And that was several years later, and like, so I think I was lied to. So bottom line is, Skyward is not forcing this change yet, they will, um, but that could be five, six, seven years down the road. Our question, as we talked in, in the business office, is that it would make sense for us to move the financial suite to cumulative now? Have one change instead of two change? Um, include the time tracker software and, um, have, have our staff, it would be their time off, it would be their payroll records, it would be some of those things that would be on the new system. It has a, a increased functionality, it's a little bit more intuitive of a program, it looks different, but on the finance side, where our staff uses that a little bit, eventually, we're gonna move student there as well, so it gives our staff a little bit of time, a little bit of a buffer before that's forced, to go to student's side and understand what it looks like and, and what it is. What are the costs? In green, this is, time tracker is an add-on module regardless of which way we go, and that, it's either called True Time in our current version, time tracker in the cumulative. If we did just True Time or time tracker, it's the same price, it would be a one-time fee of. If we did just True Time or time tracker, it's the same price, it would be a one-time fee of forty-seven sixty, and then an increase of five hundred twenty-three dollars on an annual basis. Right now, we are spending ten thousand one forty-nine on Skyward on an annual basis. This would be an increase annually of another five hundred twenty-three dollars. The one time is for setup, training, the, the backbone, if you will, the work that goes behind the scenes to make it usable and then a setup of that. If we included the move to cumulative, it's the same cost per year, so there's no increase there, but there's still that setup, in that uh, that backbone work and the, and the training that has to go along with that. In our conversations with Skyward, it, it really, it can't be a Rachel Dennis thing, it has to be, a team that puts that together. Right now, seems to be the time that we could have CISA five, cause they're now supporting us, and the idea is that with increased functionality, we could then pull that service back and have our payroll running house again. So using CISA for payroll services, short-term solution, if we could find increased efficiencies and, um have those digital time cards where it saves time, then we could pull that service back. It's kind of the idea of where we. What's that?
It'll pay for itself, if we could do that.
Either we stay where we are now, we're paying CISA.
Right.
Or we upgrade and then we pull that back, that's our, that's our eventual goal. Yep. Um we did go out and, and, and so you see the subtracting and staff planning, um position management, those things are, are added, into the core suite, which would now be add-ons if we are in the SMS, so they have um, I, I don't wanna pour salt in my own wound, but last year we had a uh, a letter that went out to staff and it was not received well, was the uh, reasonable assurance letter, which is basically what districts send out to employees to say that, you have a job next year, there's reasonable assurance that you're gonna come back in your same position. That was met with a little bit of, of feedback that it wasn't all positive. Um basically, why, why that happens is that districts, especially with support staff, um s- send that letter out that says, hey, we expect that you're gonna be in your same position next year, and that allows us to say that, you, you can't claim unemployment benefits then because we have a job for you, it's just, we're taking this on a break. And that's just one of the legal things that we have to do as a district so that there's not those claims. With the staff planning portion of the new module, uh there are, there, there is a way that in Skyward, you can send it to everybody that says, this is your position for next year, do you accept or decline? And they can, then they have a time date stamp, and so those letters go away, it's, it's again, it's a digital function now within the, the system. So that's an example of some of those efficiencies that we're talking about, instead of printing and enveloping and mailing and putting in mailboxes and then having questions, it's simply a pop-up box that comes in Skyward. For some of those same services, we did reach out to Frontline. Uh that Frontline is the company that, that currently works with our Educator Effectiveness software, that's our evaluation. Um they offer a subtracting and on, and onboarding and time off solution. As I got to learn more about it, 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 it doesn't make sense that if we're gonna pay, if we're already paying for time off with Skyward, why would we pay for it again with them? But they do offer some onboarding and some uh subtracting that we don't have right now. Um with cumulative, we would have that. With Frontline, because we are familiar with that, there would be, uh, there would be some familiarity there with our staff. Their one-time fee is sixty-six, sixty-six hundred bucks, but their annual fee is eleven thousand. So that, to me, that is, is unacceptable, because you can have virtually the same functionality except for the onboarding, with the cumulative software, and you have the one-time fee, but then the, the additional increase is very minimal. Um where we're talking five hundred dollars compared to eleven thousand, that doesn't make sense to me. So, um, I guess I'm, I'm open to questions, um other information that is needed. But that's why we, we brought this on uh the agenda today, because if we, if the board agrees um or, accepts a recommendation to go to cumulative, cause that's what we're recommending, because in, in our minds, making one change as opposed to two makes sense. If the board accepts that recommendation, we would be working for the next several months with CISA and Skyward, and we would have a financial move to cumulative at, at earliest November. And that's how long that migration has to take to make sure we troubleshoot, set up the backbone, work in the background, basically set up the system so that it's running simultaneously with our cur- current system, and then we make the switch.
Why does it take so long?
I T, right, Dan?
For sometimes one word is, doesn't match, so they gotta invert all those words over to a new word. Does not recommend doing both systems at once. Uh that would take us down for about a month.
We have a similar, I have a similar s- um system, uh we use for work, so. It's really nice, I mean, I can't, if I wanna punch in, I can't punch in until I'm in a parking lot. I mean, that's, I mean, I shouldn't say that, I can log in and have access to everything, I just can't physically punch in time clockwise. Tell you that, I can look at it anywhere, you know, if you wanna see your hours, or if you wanna see um onboarding or anything like.
Why do you forget to punch in?
It's simple, like, my supervisor, I can just go in there and punch anybody in and out. Or if you're a missing, say you didn't punch in, you just tell your supervisor, or there's an app, and you just click on the app like, I worked outside of my time period. And he's click it, and it tells you when you worked, and then your supervisor, he just approves it.
Oh, okay.
They have to approve it every, every pay period, basically, is what it comes to.
And I will say, I was at a district that we, we had, if in campus, we went to Skyward, um it wasn't a cumulative, but we went to Skyward, and we implemented True Time in that district, and one of the things is that mistakes will happen. And so we actually instituted, um it was, it was a written sheet of paper that uh the person signed saying that, I'm authorizing you to adjust my payroll records, because otherwise, if the supervisor just goes there and starts clicking, again, the employees get a little bit nervous and say, what the heck are you doing? Why are you messing with my time card? Cause that's when I worked, and you're like, well, you didn't punch out on Thursday, so it said that you worked thirty-six hours. I, I don't think you worked thirty-six hours straight, did you? Oh, no, I forgot to punch out, oh, okay. Uh we actually had them sign to say that you, uh, we have permission to, or they punched in the next day and said, oh my gosh, I forgot to punch out yesterday. Can you please adjust my time card? It was a note that you could type right in there, because that way we have.
Our alerts come right to us, like if you tried, you didn't punch out last night, you try punching this morning, it would alert me immediately saying, Dennis didn't punch in, or didn't punch out yesterday, so.
There's an irregularity. So the question, I, I guess, the, the big question is, do um, A, do we do anything? Do we just run as-is and use paper and, and pencil? I would argue that, that's trying to become more efficient, not status quo. In, in that, in that mindset or in that, that uh, in that track, do we go to, to, um True Time and keep our current system, which would be the forty-seven, sixty plus five hundred annually? Or do we make the jump to cumulative, which would be a forced change later on down the road, we don't know when, it's not within the next, two, three years, could it be five, six years, it might be. And, and then we have more modules that are included with that cost, we increase our functionality. Um we transfer our finance to the new system, the new look of it, to try to help segue that, change when the student side does come later on, and hopefully have our staff, adjusted to that, that new look and that new feel of Skyward when that change occurs. So I guess I'm open to your questions.
What does Dan think, seeing as he's our I T guy?
Well, you can either do time tracker and waste the forty-seven sixty now. And spend the fifty-six hundred.
So, cause if you pay, if you spend forty-seven sixty now, who knows if it's gonna be fifty-six hundred the next time you do it in five years? It could be, it could be nine thousand dollars next time you do it.
So, so True Time would be forty-seven, and then when we go to cumulative, it would be fifty-six and forty-seven then for timekeeper, so now you have.
If it's still fifty-six at that time. So to me, I, I would say just do it. Just do it and be done with it.
You wanna make motion for cumulative, okay, who is just gonna make a motion, is there a second?
Awesome.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor of the recommendation to go cumulative? Um all those in favor say aye. Those oppose, okay, motion carried. Computer server update, Mr. Dan.
Alright, um so we have to upgrade our physical server here, um I got three quotes on it. I went with the cheapest one, each one had a com- I made sure that they were had comparables. Um they're the exact same servers, some have different hard drives, that's why it's certain, some of the costs. And um sometimes companies get like rates where they can lock in, and then they get like this unverter rate. So um, but it was Skyward, and it's in my budget this year, so. Yeah, what are your thoughts, questions, concerns?
What do we have now?
Uh what's that?
What do we have now?
A server?
Yeah.
We have an H P uh D L three sixty gen eight or nine.
Yeah, could you give me some more details?
Yeah, we can click on the link, so it'll show us.
What we're gonna get.
It's gen eleven.
I mean, we gotten a lot of use out of it, because I haven't, I've been meaning to bring this aboard for the last two years, and just things haven't panned out.
So how are we gonna argue with you, the cheapest one and you send your budget?
Okay, do I have a motion for this?
I move, we go ahead with Dan's recommendation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, all those in favor of going with Dan's recommendation for the computer server upgrade to Skyward, say aye. Those opposed, okay, motion carried. Consider school bus usage.
I had a request from um employee to utilize one of our buses for an evening CCD trip. So initially, it was going to be St. Albert's and um Sacred Heart, uh going to a youth conference on a Wednesday evening, uh in the Los Angeles area. Um they would pay for the driver, they would pay for the bus and the miles and everything, they're just trying to get students to, the location, thinking that if they took the entire C- CCD class, it's gonna be quite a few people. Since then, uh today, I, I found out that it, it, it is not St. Albert's, it's just Sacred Heart, cause evidently St. Albert's said, we, we don't wanna participate. Um but the request still came in, and I know in the past when there's been special considerations for school bus usage, um that's come to the board, I did communicate with Todd and, and Todd is okay. Um he's like, whatever the board tells me to do, I'll do. Um I think in previous years, he's always, at least he's told me that there was kind of the sentiment that uh, we're not gonna use the school buses for other things, it's going to be just for transporting our kids. Recently, we've had a school bus in our Rochelle Parade, kind of a community um purpose, and we allowed the Nelson family usage of the bus to um, to go down to K. I know there's some school bus companies, not maybe districts that own their bus, but school bus companies that rent out their bus for bachelor and bachelorette parties and, and those types of things. I, I'm not recommending that we would ever do that, but I would say that if it's something that's for student use, um, and there's some of our students that, that go to Sacred Heart, some of our students that go to St. Albert's, so, and in the past, we have supported St. Albert's with field trips and those types of things uh with our school bus. Now, the difference this time is that it's not a school trip, it's a CCD trip. Um it's after hours, so it's not during the school day. Um but they uh, my point of contact is said that they pay for the driver, pay for miles um on the bus, and wanna know if we would allow them to use one. So I guess that's about as much as I know.
What would our insurance say?
Great question.
That would be it.
If it's with our licensed driver and miles, it's just like any, any field trip, whether it's our kids or not, it's still boils down to that driver. So.
Technically, will be some of Rochelle's kids, it's just, it's after school, I can't really, not associated with the school, affiliated with the school.
So now you're basically renting out your vehicle instead of having a field trip, because even though there's our kids, it's not for school purposes. I think they would have the, I think, I think they would have the same. And I haven't reached out to insurance about this specific question, but we did reach out to them about um driver background checks, like for our vehicles. And during that conversation, uh we are now, Tricia and I are now official users of the PARs system to do the background checks. And when we were talking about, okay, let's say that we have a volunteer coach that takes a couple wrestlers to some meet. What's the liability that we have? And, and they didn't say we couldn't do it, they didn't say we should do it or shouldn't do it, but they said, what is your process? Because if there's an accident, how did you screen and vet through that, that, that driver? That's the major consideration when it comes to insurance, because our vehicles are gonna be covered with the insurance. It's just what is your process to make sure that you have a qualified staff member in charge of that vehicle? So having that conversation, extending that to this circumstance or this situation, I would argue that if it's one of our drivers that's already hired, that's licensed to be a school bus driver, our insurance is going to be fine, because it's gonna be how did we vet that driver, more so than who were we transporting?
Anybody have any other questions or concerns? Okay, do I have a motion or? All those in favor of letting, Sacred Heart of Columbia use a bus for an adventure to pull over, all those in favor say aye. Those oppose, okay, motion carried. Alright, this board service resolution.
So I have this uh document here, I just wanna read this out loud and uh would ask the board to consider this resolution. Um Rochelle School District, a resolution honoring Leroy Miller, whereas Leroy Miller has served as a school board member for the Rochelle School District since February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and whereas Leroy Miller has served the Rochelle School District with competency, loyalty, and dedication, and whereas Leroy Miller selflessly devoted his knowledge, time, and talents as an advocate for the schoolchildren, and community's future, and whereas it is fitting and proper that this body, for the residents of the Rochelle School District, as the incorporated voice of the people, recognize Leroy Miller's contributions to the school district. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the Rochelle School District do hereby go on record for themselves, and for the citizens of the school district to recognize and announce their sincere appreciation to Leroy Miller for his dedicated service. Therefore, be it further resolved by the school board that this resolution become part of the permanent records of the Rochelle School District, and that the school district extend its, its thanks to Leroy Miller with wishes for his continued good health, happiness, and success. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Leroy Miller, signed by the school board and district administrator.
I'll make the motion.
All those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, okay, motion carried. I did.
And for those of that, those in the audience that don't know, uh Lee is not uh seeking reelection this year, so, we thank you, Lee, for your service and for being on the board for my entire tenure. But thank you very much for um the wisdom and advice that you provided in my tenure here, and I appreciate your service, thank you.
Yes, you, you'll be ready to sell, okay.
For the four K.
Oh man, we have a very education.
There's our first applicant.
And you can wear your Santa costume this season.
When I first started subbing, I took the kindergarteners and they, oh, the kids love you.
Do you wanna say anything or we'll move on?
Uh the main reason I'm not running for the school board again is cause I thought maybe I could help out more with subbing, or help out the school district that way. It was my. Main reason.
We haven't the physician open.
It is not posted yet.
Okay, alright, consider journeying to close session, the board will go into closing. Okay, all right, consider journeying into closed session. The board will go into closed executive session for. Who's at Wisconsin State Statute, sections nineteen point eight-five one C P. Where the purpose of discussing compensation of employees over which the school board exercise jurisdiction. Employee contracts, com- com- competitive proposals. Um, do you have a motion to go into closed session?
No motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say that.
Okay, at. Oh, I got, seven fifty. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those oppose? Okay, we're going to the closed session.